What do we got?
Are you gonna start the meeting?
You're gonna start the meeting, please.
Start the meeting. Tom?
So what we talked about last time was the breakdown of the budget.
Even before that, Mayor, did you guys get to give a decide like the relationship between tourism and the mayor council's gonna be the changes or as you know, you said, you know, you might approach it a different way than it has been previously?
I think right now we really haven't gone that route. Because number one, it's gonna be complicated and I think it's not a straightforward process. But I think we're good enough in working on pretty much traditionally what we've done in the past. But, you know, at some point, I think we will, you know, need to just either look at the, you know, what the ordinance is saying and try to focus our way to doing what what the ordinance says you guys should do, which is essentially, you know, tourism sponsorships, you know, not sponsorships, advertising. And, you know, how we can get more people into the town. I think some of the advertising, according to the state statute, needs to be done outside of the outside of the county and some should be geared in the county. And I think that's the real benefit of having the tourism commission to deciding where the money will be spent to promote events that are going on in the town. I know that that kind of morphed into, well, let's talk about the events and what we should have and what we shouldn't have. And I don't really have an objection to us doing that at this point. I mean, this is what you guys have always done, so. I mean, and you're all representative of businesses in the town, so it makes sense to run those things by you. So that's my position on it at this point.
There's been a lot of horns, you know, saying, my god, what you guys are doing. If you get some direction from you, they'll probably be helpful. So, you know, we spin our wheels, so to speak.
Okay, Chris, lead us.
What do we got? We wanna talk about the budget first, or are we talking about what if we have what kind of money we have, or what kind of money we're gonna have from this past year?
Yeah, I, there's, there's, short answer is no, no numbers for this meeting tonight. What we're trying to do, I was talking to CFO Lorraine Caraffa and Bridget Dudas about how it all worked in the past. And I think what we're gonna do, and there's a lot of moving pieces to the tourism and the budget and the wage structure and everything. So what we need to do in working with John Walsh and John Savvy is, is figure out the events that are happening, revenue coming in, what it costs to run the events, what the net effect is, and then where that money go, what that money goes towards going forward. I think what we wanna try to do is create a model that encompasses that whole thing, you know, like you have the seafood festival, you have the San Gennaro. Whatever, whatever the event is, the monies that come in, what the expense of what's, what's left over. And then we'll be able to define to the commission what that money is and then where it can be allocated going forward. You know, to promote tourism in the town, you know, the whole idea is to get people to come to Belmar and spend money in town.
Yeah, not just, not just on the six or seven events we had, you know.
Year round.
Correct, correct, yeah. Whole idea is to create awareness and bring people to, to Belmar to see it. However that, whatever those events are, whatever, however that happens, that's what we gotta try to figure out. But the, the key to it is understanding, I was talking to John today about knowing, knowing what our number is and then how it works from there. And in talking to Lorraine and Bridget, in, in the past, it was just kinda all over the place, you know, money was coming in but it going out. What we wanna do is corral that, create a model so that every, every meeting, you know, you guys will have an idea, right here, this is where we're at.
It's like catering then.
Right.
Yeah, we run a business. That's what we wanna do. We wanna run a business here, right?
Same thing, so, you know, and work with the mayor and John, you know, whoever, we're gonna create that model, really, really just create a model to.
Simplify it.
And then, you know, in my mind, we're looking at the individual events, those should be profit drivers, not taking money away from the budget, right? If you're throwing an event, that event should pay for itself. An event doesn't pay for itself while we have the event. You know, if you have the San Gennaro, unless it's something that's cool for the town or fun for the kids, that's free. You know, if you're doing San Gennaro, San Gennaro should pay for San Gennaro at least, right?
Yeah, and like, like the example from the last meeting, take the seafood fest. You know, seafood fest brings a lot of people in, all the restaurants lose money. What good is that? And the whole idea is to bring people in so the whole town benefits. You know, if you have an event that causes businesses to lose money, what's the purpose of that? So that, that's what we're trying to take a look at that whole thing and, and figure out what works best and, and what you guys will know as a committee going forward, how, exactly how it works.
Yeah, and I think we've started looking at the whole season of events or year of events as almost like a whole, like, you know, like if we have five events, you know, obviously some of them will be more profitable than others. But, you know, those, those funds should, you know, you might need a little extra funding to do, for example, the, the San Gennaro fest. So, I mean, if you look at it, I think as a whole, you know, the whole idea is that the events, you know, are profitable, but at the same time, you know, it gives us a way to market the, the events as a, as almost a whole thing, like, you know, these are Belmar events for 2023, boom, boom, boom. And then we can get into, you know, with, with whoever running those events, if it's the town, whatever, what kind of advertising do we think will drive people into the, into the town to attend those various events? And then that's really the role of the, of the, you know, the commission, like, what's gonna get them here and then what's gonna keep them here after those events are over? You know, the whole idea is to get them to sample what's going on and say, you know, I'll go back for dinner, or I'll go back to shop, or I'll go back to do this. So, I mean, that's one of the things that we've been working on. You wanna tell them about our latest proposed event that we?
I'll let, I'll let you tell them that, but, um, that, that's, that's, yeah, that comes from you, but, uh, there's other ways to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just.
Way to tease that one.
For curiosity, Pete. I thought the mayor was ready to talk, you guys would be, no. There's other ways to, to mark, to marketing too, I mean, because there's multiple events throughout the year. So instead of taking each one and going out and get sponsorships for each event, there's ways to package that. So you, you can have different levels of sponsorship and somebody can sponsor every event. So any event we're doing in town, you have a banner or flag or something, you know, so every event, you know, so, and there's different ways to tier it, which allows you to, to really plan that every event, you know, you know what the pot of money is that you use going forward. You know, and then, and then we can do, then you market it to get people in to spend money and, and, you know, like, and there's new events that the mayor can create to, to bring a whole another, a whole other group of people into town that probably are here all the time. But if you, if you, if you bring them in for one specific event, you know, most likely they're gonna be returning, you know, people to your town. So if I have everybody's interest peak by now, I'll let the mayor talk about this event.
Actually, Kevin had mentioned to me early on, not so much about the event, but there's this, the group of, a veteran group that will designate your town as a, what, like a veteran friendly?
Certified veteran friendly municipality.
And we have certain things that we would need to do, and they're not, they're not, you know, onerous things. But if we say that we're committed to doing those things, then they will come to, let's say, a council meeting and they will basically put on a little presentation saying that, you know, Belmar is becoming a veteran sponsored town and, you know, we might have signs up in certain areas that these are parking spaces are for veterans only or, and we'll commit to do so much purchasing, you know, a percentage of our purchasing through veteran owned businesses. There were a couple of other things.
And, and it piggybacks off the county's program, you know, where we're, you have signs in your, in your stores, you know, if you offer discounts to veterans, you know, and it ties, it really, really, it's a, it's a municipal thank you to veterans, that you appreciate them and appreciate any business you're gonna get from them. And it really just puts a spotlight on, you know, the way you feel about, about veterans. And in doing this, introducing the mayor to the individual, you know, the individual, he took it to another level and, and.
Because this, this group also sponsors a music, veterans music festival every year in Malboro, and they've been doing this for, I don't know how many years.
Eight, ten years?
Yeah, eight, ten years geared to bringing veterans and their families or the public, you know, whatever. And he happened to mention that he would love to do it in a beach town, you know, and obviously we were like, well, you know, tell us about it. And we met with him, was it yesterday, was it today? I didn't mind.
Yesterday.
And it sounds like a tremendous event. It's a, it's like, you know, a stage on the beach, it's, you know, vendors will come in on the beach and, and do what they have to do in terms of food. And they organize the whole thing, it's all organized, and obviously they charge a fee to, to attend the event because they have bands going and whatnot. And he asked if we would be interested in it, and I said, sure, why not, you know? It's a, it's an event that'll bring people into town and, you know, it'll be on the beach, it's gonna be probably on September 30th, so we're well beyond, you know, the beach season, we're well beyond some of the other events that we have in September. And it's just another event to kind of extend the tourist season. And I think it's gonna be great, you know, he's very excited, we can promote it, you know, at the five on the run, we can hand out flyers. And I think it's gonna bring a lot of people into the town. And, you know, I, I think it's, it's gonna be a real positive because, you know, people like to know we have music, they'd like to be on the beach, we have the park, you know, and, and whatnot, and it'll bring more people into Belmar, people that might not necessarily have come here, but, you know, they'll get a chance to see.
It's a different demographic.
Yeah, totally different demographic. So, I mean, this just started, this just happened, so we're excited. And I said, they, they run the whole event, you know, they've done it before, so we're not dealing with newbies, you know, in terms of, they don't know what they're doing, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be good.
The gentleman who runs it, I'm gonna name him Jeff Cantor, he's a retired Colonel, US Army Reserve Colonel with multiple deployments in Iraq and Afghanistan. He's pretty much been around the world. He's, he run, he heads up the New Jersey Veterans Chamber of Commerce, which is exactly what it says, just, you know, veteran owned businesses, you know, that are networked through this chamber of commerce and they, they sponsor this event. He's, you know, he says it's, it's going for eight, ten years, but they wanted to take it to a new location. He said, you know, I would love to do it in a beach town. I said, well, I have the beach town for you, let's have a meeting with the mayor. It's, it'll be a great event, it'll save, and just bring, bring people to town. And whether you believe in global warming or not is one thing, but it seems like September is coming. He may run, he may run the summer now from Memorial Day to Columbus Day, you know, because it's just, you know, the weather's nice, so they're, they're excited about it. He came in, he filled out the special events permit all at the same time. And once the special events committee meets and approves it and mayor council approve it.
Put it on the calendar.
Make it official.
Put it on the calendar. Gotta fill the calendar, Kevin.
Sounds great.
And he will have rain date, you know, after bitter rains, he'll just follow it.
Next day?
It's a one day, it's a one day event.
Following Saturday, probably. Or Saturday, not the next Sunday.
No, no. So that's, you know, that's where we're at, that's a new event. As far as the seafood festival, I think it's, we decided Silver Lake is where we're going to hold this year. Obviously, we need to, like the chief and the DPW know for sure, we had discussions with them, but we hadn't come up with a, a final. But it's pretty much everyone we speak to is, is pretty much on board.
Goes to the point, if you're gonna go through the, the effort of having an event to bring that many people to town and the businesses lose money, what's the point? The point is to, to have the businesses make money, you know, everybody enjoy the town and, and bring that back to the town. You know, if, if the restaurants are closed, Chris, say, you know, you, you, you know, you've had it and say, I, I lose too much money, I'm closing. They won't know, you know, anybody coming there won't even know if they come back to your restaurant in future terms. So, you know, so that's the whole thing, and everybody we talk to, you know, business wise, made money.
I think that's a great idea because what differentiates the event from it being in Freehold, Marburg, some of the town, is the ocean. We put it in a parking lot, we're turning in, you're in any town, you're in any town, Montego County.
Just got legged up.
Yeah, so, so I think, and I think the big events like that, besides what they do for the business on the weekend, I think it really does help overall the town and brings people to say, wow, that's a different town than the eighties when I came down here and we were drinking beers at Montego Bay. I'm gonna buy a million dollar beach house, you know, I'm gonna think about buying it here. But, yeah, I think it's great for it to be back in Silver Lake, you know.
And I think people calling, I mean, you know, that they have, people that are calling that wanna be in the event, I think are excited that it's not here, you know.
She was basically saying, please tell me it's at the lake because I don't, I don't wanna do it. And, I mean, I was like, oh, we're deciding, you know, which, I mean, I knew where we were at, but, you know.
Well, I think we, we need to have, you know, an opportunity for all the businesses in town.
Absolutely.
To have some kind of swag that, you know, at the tourism booth that we'll have there, to be able to advertise their business.
Absolutely.
I mean, at, at least get it out there to let everybody know, hey, give me some kind of something that we can give, you know, that's a swag bag, whatever, whatever it is.
Something to draw them back to the town. Is there a way to say like, come back next weekend or come back next month?
Or later.
You sent out the discounts or the, you know, the dinners that come to my house.
Yeah, ball pack.
We always say we're gonna use it, but we never, we never do. But, I mean, it's a good, it's a good ploy.
Those are things I think that the commission is really, you know, get into in terms of thinking of ideas, you know, like, put certain, not that they have to do it, but just to, you know, put those ideas out there. You know, whether you wanna give a discount ticket, whether you wanna give, you know, something else, a cup or, you know, whatever, you know, so that you drive people back into the town.
I would like to see.
Next two weeks, you get a, you know, fifteen percent off or whatever.
When you think about the event, I would like to see it go back to what it used to be, which was a seafood festival. To me, it turned into a carnival. I mean, like, when you see guys pulling up a tractor trailer from Georgia and you just say, why is this guy here? We can't find somebody that can bake catfish, like, we, we, guys downtown where you are, there's plenty of guys that can serve food. We don't need a guy coming in with ten carnival workers and saying, okay, you know, and who can compete with a guy who does it every weekend? Who, if it gets rained out and it's horrible, right, he just throws the stuff back in the freezer, next week, he's in Saratoga. You know, whereas small businesses are saying, this is about what I can lay out. And they're not gonna make as much money, but also gives the opportunity for maybe Chris has something and also his sales, because I used to work that firsthand. There was nothing better than the vendor next to you sold out. Chris is packing out and all of a sudden I'm busy as heck. All, all of a sudden my stuff was selling as hotcakes. But when you're up against a guy with a tractor trailer, he's not running out. You know, and he's not bringing anything back to town, he's just taking the money.
The whale's no fun intended.
Exactly, yes, you're right. Yeah, so I would love to see it.
Some cigar guy without a store.
Yeah, that's right. A guy can just wholesale come in and blow away everybody's price because he's moving a volume that's, it doesn't matter, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Remember the Alamo.
And that's something I think, again, that you got, you people on the commission can talk up with vendors, you know, and say, you know, seafood festivals coming, wanna get contact, you know, the borough and, and get yourself signed up for a spot, you know, so that, you know, we have a broad section of things to offer at the festival.
I just wrote in some historic information too about how they kind of bundled those events and said, hey, you know, here are all the events that are happening. They weren't just Belmar events, but they were like, here are all the events that are happening and maybe sixty percent of those events in that flyer were Belmar events and signups from all right now. You know, which is a great way to do it. And then when you look at, if we do Facebook, Instagram, whatever, right, look at, you can look in Google Analytics or you can look in just Facebook Analytics or Instagram Analytics on the demographics of who viewed those ads, interacted with those ads, said they were gonna go, if you created an event, said yes. And then you can see, oh, this many people came from this county, this many people came from this county, and then you were talking about allocating those advertising dollars. Now you know, hey, if you buy a train station ad in this town, those are people who, you know, forty-three percent of the people who interacted with our ads were from this county. So with that kind of oversight, you know, and if you're looking for an increase in a mailing list or you're looking for an increase of likes on the page, you can all measure it, you can measure it that way.
That's good news.
I'd agree on that.
The, I was looking over some of the applications from the past years. It, it sounds like for food vendors, Belmar, it is like a discount, but the standard price is like eighteen hundred for food vendors. And then the standard price for craft vendors, five hundred. So, I mean, I don't know if that's like a resolution to change, but I mean, that's probably what we'll go with again, it's been like that, it's pretty standard. The application I've been creating is pretty much gonna be digital. A lot of, a lot of it's not, you know, you're not gonna get seventeen pages from me. There, there will be an option to do a, a printout one if you need it. But, um, yeah, and, and this should be, it should be pretty, pretty simple. I'm trying to figure out, like, what is the vetting process, like, you know, I have people calling me already, I, I, I just don't know. I guess it's my.
We're gonna send that to all of the vendors in town, is that the plan?
I would like to send it to everyone in Belmar first, just to get it out, because now everyone else is kind of reaching out to me. So, I mean, at that point, it's whoever contacts us.
Right, that'd be good if you.
Well, it's like you have, you'll have controls, you'll have control over it where you, you give Belmar the first dibs of opportunity to, you know, you know, like, like Bill was saying, like, it'd be nice to see, you know, fifteen eateries in Belmar.
In my head, I can only think of like five Belmar eateries that participate. I mean, that's what I think about when I'm thinking about past festivals.
Well, I think it was also like where you dialed in the right people in town, was if you were the event, right? No, I'm saying, he's saying only like five vendors of food, right?
That's what I would, I mean, when I was younger.
But I'm thinking was, you had to really know somebody to be able to get booth, right?
It was a little political then, yeah.
But you also had to, or had a big sizable business, you weren't gonna be a smaller.
To be able to do it.
Yeah.
But, I mean, even then, like, when you talk about those guys coming in from Georgia, you know, if we have spots to fill after Belmar, this shouldn't it go to like, at least local businesses? Something in the town, it should go county or ocean town.
Right, I mean, look, the Maryland crab cake was an institution, those people came and people, the line for them was just like, wow, we should get figured out a big damn. I mean, they had great signage and some of the people with upgrade signage had unbelievable food and you'd be like, how's that guy killing them and the place looks like, you know, I don't.
But it had the food, it was.
He's a professional carny.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's funny, I do a lot of events and I see even like the little local food truck guys that don't come out to the Belmar events are at every other event that I do. And they say, listen, I got tired of the price fluctuating, I got tired of the price was one thing one year, one thing another year, you know, I don't go to Belmar anymore. There was a, you know, they had a Italian food truck, uh, three to one or anything, it's like, yeah, I don't, I don't mess with Belmar anymore because I don't know what that price is gonna be. It's one thing one year, one thing another year.
So we know if our price is, is in line with what other seafood events, I mean, there are a few around, but.
Chamber of Commerce's number for Point Pleasant, so I was gonna give them a call.
I'm just curious.
You know what theirs is?
Are we adding line?
Thousand bucks.
A thousand.
It's seven fifty, it's seven fifty.
Eight hundred bucks, one day, but you have to be a member of the chamber, it's gonna cost you bucks, two hundred, so it's a thousand, it's a thousand dollar.
I mean, ours is, ours is eighteen for three days.
Right.
I mean, you know, break that down.
Raise it up.
I think it's, you know, I think it's a, a decent, I mean, I just, I don't, what did you, you guys are the, you guys are the businesses.
It's definitely fair.
It's fair.
It's a fair number.
Been that way for a while.
Food vendor, the food truck, for two days.
That's two days.
Yeah.
But that has to be clear, everyone told me that was never clear for the past, how many years, that what was the discount? What, what are they charging? Was this suite would tell me one thing, then the other person suddenly would get another, so it has to be straight line?
If you have an automated form, that's a link that we can then forward to our other friends, our businesses in town or in the county or the next county over, that's super helpful.
And that's normal too, though, the, the, the local town, it's like the Monmouth County Fair, same thing, if you're out of, if you're out of county.
I found documents.
It's, it's enormously more.
I found documents from like nineteen ninety-nine for the seafood festival, I mean, because I was trying to find stuff, like you said, bring it back to what it used to be. I mean, that's a little bit fun, but, I mean, we had like, uh, like a, like a county fair aspect to it in a, in a good way. Like, we had like the corn eating contest and like fun events and, I mean, I remember the kids tech with like the magic show, like, that's the stuff the tourism commission actually ran for the festival itself. It's like the tourism commission said, okay, we're gonna hire a magician or, I mean, I guess it's really us, but, I mean, you know, for the kids, we're gonna do a magician in, in one of the tents for the kids. We're doing arts and craft tent that's free, I mean, maybe that's how, you know, and then how do we advertise the businesses there to the parents, you know? Or like, is it a color book of Belmar with, like, do we get an illustration with Belmar businesses on it that wanna, you know, I don't know.
And if you do.
Well, hopefully PTO could, PTO is gonna involve too.
Well, they, yeah, that's.
And if you do, and if you have a digital list of vendors that you send this to every year.
We don't.
You know, which.
We're gonna get.
We're gonna compile, right? And then you can have a postmortem after all these events and go, and you go, hey, you know, that business was really great, they had a really cool setup, that's great to have a local business in, let's make sure that we reach out to them next one, you know.
So Mayor, is that the same dates, May?
Yes.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
So it's quick, well, that quick.
Yeah, I mean, this, this application, I mean, it, it has to, it has to grow.
So, John, I think we had a question last week and you weren't here, you guys do HubSpot, HootSuite, you guys do anything?
We, I was talking to John about the other day, I believe in a hundred percent organic, um, because we have the bandwidth to do that. But if we were to ramp this up, I would recommend a HootSuite and get that.
No, but even though you're doing a hundred percent organic, do you have to go into each of those individual applications in order to look at the numbers? Is there one, because like we had a content aggregator.
Well, Facebook is Instagram and Facebook, so I, I see both through that, and then our website, our website people give us that data, and what's the other one? That's it, yeah, that's basically it.
HubSpot's pretty sweet because you see it all in one spot, and then you can see replies, and then you can do like a little CRM, even in the free version, you can do a little CRM out of it and see, and all those emails go into a master list as they come in. So you can set it up, so as somebody registers on that registration form, their email is automatically added to your HubSpot list. Right, and then you can segment those lists, you can create a form, right, in HubSpot, attach that form to that application. As that form comes back in, you can say, I'm gonna put this into the seafood folder and I'm gonna put it into the general vendor folder, right, contact folder. And you can segment those folders out in HubSpot, so now you're compiling a list of vendors. You could also do the same thing with people who reach out for more information about Belmar, put them into just consumer, a consumer list. And then you can send all those lists or one of those lists, whatever communications you want. So I think if we segment out like that, then we can reach out to people, you know, as seasons come up, trimesters come up, quarters come up and say, hey, you know, if you have a pop on event, we already have that list. You know, and then you can see those demographics, who interacts, how often, all that good stuff is kind of like how you, how you do marketing. We've had this conversation.
Tons of times, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the big one coming up, I mean, I don't know if we wanna pivot to the Dine and Discover, well, that's kind of underway. Did you get to send out that email?
I sent out a big email, we got Sweet, Klein's, and Corner Bakery, and so, uh, new people, uh, this is the month, these are the next two months where I knock on every single door and beg people to sign up and they don't even sign up till two days beforehand. Um, so, yeah, so I'm on net process now, so we, we have everything set up with our website people. Uh, we already sold well over four hundred tickets, which is bigger than we've ever had to this point, so I think the reputation is proceeding itself. Uh, we have three trolleys this year, uh, which is one of our big issues, um, that people were waiting a little long. Uh, and one of the biggest issues was, you know, Love Ply Balls, they're great, but they were giving a shot of juice. And then people would take that shot of juice, turn around, the bus was gone, so they have to sit for forty-five minutes, wait for that bus. So we're still confirming if the Dolce Vita wants to do it, um, but if not, we're gonna cut the other two, Coney and Ply, and it'll just be Joe's and DJ's and it'll cut the line. So, uh, that's kind of where we're at right now, but it, right now, it kind of runs itself, we're working with, with the mayor and Kevin about, you know, how we're gonna take care of certain things in the backend. Uh, but right now, I just gotta knock on every door and email nonstop.
Have you reached out to the restaurants?
You get the main email? I get, it's the one that we, I kived Facebook last year, was every business, so you should have gotten it. Okay, I, well.
It's definitely not too late because we just reached out yesterday, so if there's any problems, just reach out to us.
Yeah, we're fine.
Discover if you're not a restaurant.
What's up?
I wouldn't have you, partner.
Oh, so, so you get the email the other, so, so the email that I sent out, the first email is. Oh, so, so you get the email the other, so, so the email that I sent out, the first email is that it's all businesses, and we, and I always say, hey, what can we do for you? Can I market you during that day to help you make money that day, if you're not a food type of scenario, so we're working things like this.
That is participating, and then, you know, set up in their shop, I mean, that's, it it, to my understanding, the restaurants run themselves.
I'll just talk to Barry, I'll be served.
There you go, I mean.
They're actually really good, that they partnered up with that, and and, so that's the issue with Barry's, you gotta figure that out, cause you might not be going to Barry now, now, that's actually a good point, because they're in that same area. So, maybe Barry will come down to you, yeah, he'll do that.
You can be a spot.
Gotta get him his little flavors.
John, I can see you doing some SMS marketing, just texting to the business owners, and just say, check an email we sent out about Dine and Discover.
Right.
Not driving people crazy, but Chris with the Monona was like, hey, you sent that out, okay, just checking my two emails, I didn't get it. Like, in other words, you don't know what you're not getting if you don't get.
Yeah.
Right. Everybody, they try to flush a water main, I get a text message. I can't find out about seafood.
Um, well, actually, I.
Businesses, I think, would be.
We have our Nixel system, I was gonna actually show John, cause I didn't have the bandwidth to do it, but I set it halfway up, uh, so I wanted to do, um. Like you said, I wanna make the list of all the businesses, so we had, we, last year we made, or a couple months ago, we made the full business list, for some reason, we didn't have all businesses in town, I don't know why. So, we went, uh, all day long, my intern, and we got the whole list, so now we're gonna take that list, I'm gonna send it out as a full Nixel. So again, if they don't know, they look for it, I don't know how, I mean, you're gonna find people complaining, not gonna see it, even if so, it's everywhere.
No, if you get.
But what I wanna do is go right directly to you, and your businesses will get that text to your phone, and then you can opt out whether you want or not. And then, and then my idea was that to Dine and Discover, if there's an emergency, or a thing, or that, or you're running low on food, you can hit me up, and I'll be like, okay, this and this. And then I can coach you along how to keep going, cause some people would finish their food and then hand out like salad cups. I'm like, you just had fried chicken, you got any salad cups, like, we can't do that, like, cause really ideas would be upper echelon, we're trying to show people how great your food is. So like, people have to put their best foot forward, so we're trying to also, uh, consult them in a way to understand how this is beneficial, and how we can help them be more beneficial. Uh, the only issue with everyone doing it themselves that day is they try their best, but like, we can't train everyone to know, you know, they they literally, like I said, sign up at the last second every time. So, it's also whose businesses to kinda do this, if they wanna do this. But, uh, we also did during COVID time, and it was very hard for everyone to get a meal together, you know, with no staff and everything else, so this year's gonna be a little different, because it's a little different.
You you know, you could see, uh, guys, possibly, when Saint Rose ran years ago, they sent to Matisse. Two students to help, which were unpaid, but it's like, couldn't you see something like that happening, possibly at the high school level? Or at the eighth, just like saying, like, this is your little bit of day of service, half a day, you come in the night before, we're gonna make sure that like. And you you wouldn't give somebody something that they could hurt themselves.
Right, no, just.
Like, basically, you scoop this into this cup.
We, we fully did, well, what we did was, we did, um, the culinary school, I got all the culinary.
You get, you think you get them stuff?
We probably could.
Uh, cause I think that would help, just, you know, if somebody's really only has two employees, you can also enroll in.
Right. Well, I think it'd be great, well, like, for instance, Flames would come in, they had a great spread, uh, but people coming to pay and give them money, go, oh, great spread. And then walk in, and they, everyone benefited, and no one benefited, how it's supposed to be done, so I think if we had like that, like you're saying, like pointers would be great too. Or like, people by the bus stop saying, what's going on?
The places, just like, you're walking in.
Yeah.
The people running the place are trying to run the show, to make sure everything's hot, clean, and doesn't look like a mess, a little ambassador, even if it's, you know, somebody they were saying. Would be, it's right over here, oh, you're here for dinner, you're over there.
Yeah, I mean, so pivot even on that, I mean, volunteers for the seafood festival, I don't even have that, what do you mean, like, I'm I'm thinking just like. Day out stuff, like, how many, like, what staff is involved? And there's, there's not that much, there's not that much staff here, you don't mean in the borough, I mean, there's BPW, but do you make them do, I don't, I don't know.
I'm more than happy to do vendor relations, which I think is important, so, vendor relations, so that you're not.
Well, exactly, yeah.
You don't have people to go here, go there, and, and, you know, so you want the vendors to have a good experience, so they can go back again.
Yeah, I mean, luckily, what I've seen in the things at the reading is that the setup is Friday now, so there's really, the rush is kind of a little slower. Because it's not, it sounds like setup was like Saturday morning, so it passed it, so it was like, six AM.
Seafood.
Yeah, I remember, Mary. No, it was Thursday, Thursday, it was Thursday setup.
Thursday setup.
Thursday, well, Friday was start.
Yeah, Thursday was.
Friday is local night.
Yeah, well, well, and and last year, it was Friday setup at at eight AM, so.
That was at the parking lot, cause they had to clear out the parking lot, back at the. I had my trailer, I had my trailer there.
Sometimes, who is that?
You had your trailer there a week early.
The lemon and everything.
And John, you remember, Mary.
It's all in her head.
Yeah, I know, it's all in her head.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough.
But I've seen a lot of great events, and I've been to some not so great events, and the ones that are run well, they just go, they email you, you know, months before, and say, you're spot number five. Here's the map, here's where, here's where you set up, so you don't have to go looking for somebody with a clipboard, you just go set up your stuff in that spot, you know?
I mean, I think, you know, I just keep saying, Derek, like, once we get through this year, it's gonna be very nice. The twenty twenty-four festival is gonna be great, but the twenty twenty-three festival is also gonna be great, but, you know.
Just to go back to the, to the, the, you know, people in town that we wanna contact, how many, how many businesses?
Hundred and fifty-three about.
How many?
Hundred and fifty-three.
Hundred and fifty-three.
Something like that.
I mean, it is possible, if if we had, again, volunteers, we could actually hand deliver notices to people. If, you know, that's not a lot of people, you know, you get two or three people, um, with a list, we could, we could just go to the, to the various.
Once I do some Dine and Discover, I do the face thing.
You know, you got it, you know, if that's something we think we need to do.
Yeah, but that's, it has to continue to do.
Yeah, I would love an intern again, that'd be good.
They are, we, I'm one of them, I mean, it it happens, you get it, you get it, may, may not have given it to the owner. Right, and you gotta keep pounding the pavement, you know, you can pound all your, it it, that.
Doesn't matter.
And digital's awesome, because if I get something digitally, I'm much more likely to just, wherever I am, just go, all right, I'll pay that right now.
Well, Dine and Discover's digital, so, we'll see what happens.
Well, I think what we should do.
Still never works.
Get the, uh, uh, thing out, and I'll come around with a bullhorn. From the restaurant, I'd say, did you get the notice?
That might work, that might be a genius idea. That might be a genius idea, a parade, where did I discover? I'm with that. So that's, uh, Dine and Discover, yeah, we're we're pretty much good to go, I just gotta figure out whether I self, what's the best way to reach people that are informed and ready to rock that day? Cause we even had Coney Waffle, they're great, but they they signed up for on the beach, and then when, they just didn't even show up, so I had that list, I could have said, where you at? Or were you, or he could let me know what's going on, and so I, I wanted to start working on that, that this year's, I think, the only thing we're kinda missing is how to communicate better with the businesses and help them more.
I mean, I just got a email today for an event in September, so.
Yes, no, I I I get that. We are, you know, it it it, this was a couple months ago.
It'll all be great.
Yeah.
This is, this is way out of last year, though.
Okay, great, love that.
Marie and I did a lot of walking in the last couple of, we did a walking and knocking on doors, so, I mean, that's, that's the easy part, really, so, um.
But, I mean, yeah, like Jerry said, some events bring in more money, and then some events don't, but then they can subsidize each other. You know, when I was little, we had a baby parade, we had, you know, like, a, a bike, even like a bike decorated contest, like, cause they're like, that's. Local tourism, like, we, you know, it's easy stuff, easy stuff to do, less, not many.
It'd be cool to see, like, each event broken down by, you know, what have you spent on advertising?
Yeah.
Who interacted with it?
That'd be awesome.
Um, what did the event bring in, so then you've got a cost per person.
Like movies, like Movies on the Beach, I mean, right, like, from what I can tell, it's not profitable.
Yeah, cause we're just paying for it.
Yeah.
But we've talked about trying to align real sponsorships with that, and then when you do it in that package deal, like Kevin was talking about, now we can make a profit, or at least get a couple grand out of it.
Showroom wanna sponsor Movies on the Beach.
At least pay for it.
Well, I was saying to John too, we have that, that's a nice, great system, it's very turnkey, we could do it in the gym, we could do it, we we probably loved it at the field. We could have Field of Dreams every year, you know, things like that, so at least utilize it, get as money's worth, and then, you know, whatever it is, you know.
What date are we, is the Movies on the Beach?
Uh, there's, right now, there were, well, last season, there were Thursdays, maybe we have not many.
You know, it wasn't even drawing people?
Oh, no, we had, we had a big showing in the past four years.
The two changed, we have not discussed like.
How many times did you do it?
It ran, it usually runs like after the fourth.
It's like seven or eight.
Seven or eight, we'd had a good season last year.
I like it better on on those weekdays, cause I think you get more local people.
It was more local.
I think on a Saturday, when they had switched it to the weekend, I was like, okay, Billy, you're not going to that, that's a busy road. I'm not sitting there for twenty-five hours for you to watch this movie that like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, if you did Movies on Thursdays, concerts on Fridays, you'd tease up for the weekend.
Yeah, no, no.
And if we have a P and L, and we're looking at all the events, and you know one's a loss leader, you roll that, you roll the cost for the movies. Into into all the other events, so that all the other events then pay for the movies.
Um, the farmer's market, uh, has to be approved by council, I mean, we haven't discussed it at all, but I keep getting emails from them, you know, people wanting it. What what do you guys think of the farmer's market?
You should have farmers, that's what I say, there should be farmers there.
That is the problem.
I mean, April was like, literally like calling me, asking me to go down to it, and I'm like, it's at four thirty, like, my shift's run from noon to five.
Yeah.
Like, so, I'll never be able to get, you know, and then like, oh, well, we don't really want cigars, so. I was like, all right.
I'm gonna sell vodka.
Yeah, that was a vodka, uh.
Things cigars would go perfect.
That was a tasty.
You can taste it too, so.
I mean, we have a great event presence, and if we know we're gonna be somewhere, and we know people are gonna be there, and it's worth, or want to be there.
I mean, it ran from Memorial Day through after Labor Day, and personally, I think that's oversaturated.
Uh, we talked about that before, where they wanted to cut two weeks back, cause it was much.
And Wednesday's a little great, right, there's not a lot of people, you know, I know you're trying.
One thing was a good local thing.
They chose Wednesday, I think, because.
Purposefully.
There's so many other markets and other towns, so there's a lot of competition.
Yeah, but then, but then you also don't get the draw, so then it's also not as beneficial to the stand. And then you get smaller vendors who are a little more niche, and then you don't get.
Very niche.
Well, my problem is I didn't market it a lot last last time, because I couldn't, cause it was the same thing every time. And it was only one vegetable grower and everything else, you can't see me ninety times and woodhouses, like, you just can't, so I couldn't get really creative, I get nuts, I did. I livestreamed every, every one, except for the last one, and and it just, it's all the same.
We have a farmer's market at one point, Piano Plaza.
Yes, on Saturday, but now.
Uh, that was something, someone with those people that ran it, couldn't make it anymore, or something, or something like, the COVID hit too.
All right, take care.
Yeah, that was.
There was something with them, there was something with them.
Started pretty early.
Yeah, they usually don't stay long, you know, like, it's like a.
If we tried to jump in on that Saturday market now, with the, all the other farmers markets that go on, it would be.
They're probably booked.
We're, we're, we would be way behind, because we we are just not, we don't have any reputation for, to bring a better farm. Or, I mean, I was talking to April, she said she asked the gentleman on sixteenth by seven eleven, not seven, by CBS, across the street.
Oh, Matt's one.
Yes.
Yeah, and he was like, why, why would I come there?
Well, he's so cool.
Well, yeah.
You know, but I mean, you know, and it would be like, please, you know.
Well, that was a quick thing they made, but maybe we could, um, one of the other ideas I was trying to work with is by the, um, Marina. The whole concrete area over there, so you're gonna get them down there, it's gonna look beautiful, and you could have a mix, it doesn't have to be, you know, vegetable people, if you have one, good, you're done. And then you can have all these hodgepodge of whatever's going on, and put people down there, and that could be a cool way to, like, get them down, like a seafood fest, they wanna see the seafood fest.
No, no, where are you talking?
Uh, so, Pier, uh, Night to Half.
Pier Bar.
The Pier, that side, so like, you know where you go down, there's that beautiful walkway that's underneath the bridge.
Parking there, it's like, the fishermen park their car, they're gone for seven hours, so you could be there all day.
Yeah, but, well, you would could do it at a, oh, yeah, well, they leave at like two thirty, right, or no?
Yeah, there there, there is a sweet spot of when they're out.
Because if you, they can take the mass transit, they can market mass transit, and that parking's never full, around there, so I mean, we could, we could, I think we could maybe make it work. If it's as big as the, um, farmer's market, we definitely could make it work, cause it wasn't, you know, it wasn't many people.
And you're talking like on a Wednesday, I could see that working on, possibly on a, on a weeknight, you're saying, before. Pier Bar starts to take over all the parking?
Well, like Christine said, they, that's what they did in the pavilion, um, Piano Plaza, it was, it really was like an hour and a half. But they were there all the time, so if you missed it, you, you know, you're back on the next one, and then it was just a quick in and out.
I mean, the schedule that I see was four to eight, I mean, that's a long time.
That's a long time.
For, I mean, on a Wednesday, I mean, I I would only see it when I, when I drop in.
You would definitely have more people, cause you got more people down in that area, but I do believe, Mayor, there's some kind of rule. That possibly Marina Grill, right, controls anything to do with food.
Correct, that's actually correct, yep, hundred percent.
So, that.
But but I think.
In their lease, it's some sort.
I think the Piano Plaza would work awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's parking there.
You know, like, if I'm gonna go to the farmer's market, I don't wanna.
And it doesn't go usually.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying not farmers, I'll say this would be something off from the farmer's market, as the employer addition to, and then the.
And it does have to go.
Yeah, something like that, I mean, I mean, cause it's, I mean, I didn't see it work last year, that's all I'm saying, I didn't see it work at all last year.
I think the twelfth avenue spot is okay, it's just that you're not tracking, you know, it's a farmer's market, it's just down to food, you know, and whatnot, and it's kinda like.
It was easy to drive past.
It was easy to drive.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was.
And I, I'm a local who lives right there.
Well, I didn't land that location, cause it took it to a place in town where no one goes.
Miss it, for nothing.
Yeah, it's easy to miss it, but it's also like, oh, should I park, oh, no, but I just, I missed it.
You missed it, right.
Next week.
Next week.
Bye, come on, local.
Well, that's why I'm like, yeah, well, that's my lazy local parent here. That's the schedule, then there isn't next week, like, there's really only, you know, you know that it's only for the month of August, or the month of July and August, or the month of August and September. You know, you have to go also with the crops.
Who were you able to get, like, was that the Old Bridge, there was a Old Bridge produce guy that came for years when it was in mail.
No, this was, like, these guys were like from Pennsylvania.
Was it, but there was like two people, right, there was like, the one guy near the bank of place, near you, right? And then at the other end was like an organic person, cause I used to go to it, you know, on Saturday morning, if I would remember.
Oh, I mean, the early one, yes, that one, yeah, yeah, that one was, yeah, they had two, two or three vendors, it's small though, right?
You gotta, you gotta think about, like, what are your target vendors?
Yeah, it was early.
It was like eight to twelve.
It was early, yeah.
I think it was eight to twelve.
What's the benefit to those people, right, you know what I mean, like?
I think it's like a local feel-good thing, I mean.
I mean, yeah, that's that.
It's really all it is.
I think it was, the main street last year, the purpose was to showcase that end of town and and bring foot traffic down to those businesses, like, where he's always.
Definitely, and there is parking there, that whole strip is all parking.
And it's nice and shaded there with the trees and the park.
It was pretty.
It was quiet, I did like the area, I just think you could figure out a way to get better things there, so that people will show up.
I mean, the goal of the farmer's market is to have people eat farm fresh food.
Yeah, not.
It's not necessarily to buy, you know, like.
Oh, they love the people.
Nothing, that's bad, but, you know, I think that's the whole idea, you know, let's get people to eat foods that are grown in New Jersey, and, you know, and we can offer them that. If we, people don't wanna participate, the farmers themselves, then there's not much more that we can do, cause then you, then you're just.
That works with crafts.
Then you're just creating a market, you know.
Yeah, it's not farmers, that wasn't farmers market last year at all.
And all that, if you wanna determine a farmer's market, then you really need to get the farmers to to buy into.
Gotta get a couple of, of a, you know, core vendors.
Right.
That'll provide what we need, and then everybody's can fill in, you know?
And they get the price.
And it is gonna be a short time, because the Jersey season is not that big, you know, you're not gonna get Jersey tomatoes at the beginning of June. It's just not gonna happen unless they're growing them in the greenhouse, you know, and, you know, as the summer goes on, then you'll get corn, and you'll get tomatoes, and, you know, whatever else. Uh, is grown, you know, fruits, whatever.
I mean, that's why, I mean, that's why I even said August, September, because maybe there is, and then how do you extend the season, you know?
You know, if you think about, even with blueberries, Jersey blueberries, and then when the corn comes in, and tomatoes, if you made. Kinda like a contract with somebody who really has the blueberries, and said, we're sending a pickup truck down to Hamm, Hammington, whatever name that town is down. And we're gonna go buy them for nothing, and then bring them up here, and everybody's gonna go, I'm going here for blueberries, cause they're gonna have them.
Right. Right.
The beach shop writes the price, and they're gonna be fresh from the farm from two days ago. That would kinda give you something, a hook on the June trip, you know, the June anchor date. And might get people that would say, you know, that was, that was worth going to, you know, that was, you know, it it. Outside the box of just hoping that the guy brings a lot of blueberries, no, you just say, uh, John, go down there, take the pickup truck.
Yeah, I love that.
Three hundred dollars for the blueberries, hopefully we sell them.
And he'll come back to Amy Cooper's.
What's corn? What's corn? I have early corn, and you know, you can give them stagger it based on what type it is.
But yeah, right, but when Jersey corn comes in, that's a big.
We're just gonna go to ShopRant.
We'll make our own farmer's market.
But if you were to have, if you were to have a focus for each of those dates.
Right, right.
And this means, this means blueberries, and the one towards September is corn, this one's.
You can lock that down, yeah.
This one's tomato, this one's cucumber, that's hard to.
How does the chef like on blueberries?
But then you find a specific vendor for each one of those, and then you meet them.
Or they could do like they used to do, like they used to do in Jersey City, they'd have a truck all around with a big thing on it, and they have.
They would just sell.
I'm only getting to see.
That actually seems to be pretty cool to me, I would love to go back to my house and give me some berries.
Corn and the cowls, peaches.
You know, John, think of Emery's, Emery's Blueberries, it's out in New Egypt.
Oh, you know that's.
They do big pies, right? I mean.
I had that story. And also I wanna look at two, like, is this a bandwidth thing, cause if we're gonna do all these crazy events and make them amazing?
Right.
You know, like, we don't want, you know, I think maybe that might have happened, you know, we tried all these other events, and this one was the stepchild.
So that's the thing, if you're gonna have an event, you gotta find a way to elevate, you gotta find a way to market it, you have to find a way to run the demographics. To see if the vendors even wanna do it, if people wanna go to it, if the people are kinda, and the vendors are kinda, maybe it's not awesome.
Yeah.
And but they remember that too.
And then people remember that it sucked, and they don't come back for the next.
That's what I mean, like, they're gonna remember.
They're gonna remember last year's, they're gonna remember last year's uh farmer's market, that's, that's already written in our, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I I do an event for exposure.
Yeah.
Right, and I bring my guy, and he hand rolls, and everybody goes, look, the guy hand rolled cigars, like, I don't expect to make what I would make.
Your store.
Sometimes I do an event, and we make a lot, but we do a lot of private events, and we charge a lot of money for those private events. But my hand roller charged me the same amount, whether it's a private event or a town event, you know, so it's the same cost to me. Um, so I'm pretty much doing some of those things for cost, because I like the goodwill, I like the town, I wanna. I like the area, I want more people to know about my business, right, so there's gotta be some sort of hook for people to participate in that.
I mean, if we can be quality and small, that could be cool, or we gotta be big and, you know, go crazy with it, like, we're gonna try to do fair.
I mean, it it boils down to whether it even pays to have.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that was a quick add-on a couple of years ago.
That's what we're trying.
No, no, right, the days could be gone, just like you're competing with a chef right down the street, and he's got everything.
Whole foods.
Yeah, right, you get a lot of.
Sometimes you can, you can think of an anchor business that maybe could have it, like, I know we don't like parking lots, but. Is that new brewery technically available?
No, that's not a.
Wham, wow, but I was saying, like, a place like that, if you could have a little, some vendors somewhere, or like, maybe the rooftop of the brewery here, they had a new rooftop.
That'd be kinda.
You got some vendors on the roof, and then people could wander around and see that, and then go down and get a beer.
They would love that, cause they're always gonna be able to go there.
You know?
I mean, the other option too, and I'm just, I'm not even taking this through, is, you know, you have the Friday night concerts.
You make it a part of it.
Right? Just have vendors.
Right, that's possible.
Yeah.
You already have an event going.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, as long as, yeah.
You know, at the other end of Piano Plaza, where you take, you know, walk with a few parks.
I was thinking the same, I think it is a viable thing, get, get them to revi- to revive it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you're bringing people in a guaranteed crowd.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, people sometimes bring their own food.
Yeah, yeah.
And it can start, it can start earlier than the band, and continue through the first half of it, you know, band starts at what?
It's a thought, you know.
I guess we're already there.
People shop for experiences, people pay for experiences, you know.
The sizzle's wonderful.
They can, but people experience it, so they wanna see, you know.
That'd be great, and I'm sure they would jump to do that, if they know there's a crowd there, if they know there's a crowd there.
Yeah, exactly.
No, no, it's the vendors, that wouldn't be a farmer's market, it's a.
Market the plaza.
Yeah.
Market the plaza.
Friday night market, there you go.
Ooh, that could be a cool logo.
Never know what you're gonna find.
Friday night market, Bellmark, music and marketing.
Well, and then, and then subsidize the the same event that we're having.
But you gotta be careful, that, and that, I think, you know, those there can't be a business that hurts an existing business, you know what I mean?
You don't wanna have a, if you have an ice cream place, you don't wanna have a vendor there that's selling ice cream, you know, cause that's counted the cost.
So you might have cucumbers.
Yeah, so the pickle guy's safe.
Pickle guy's safe. He's a fun guy.
There are some of those like random specialty, like trucks that show up and.
I love those.
Which is always cool to see, as long as it doesn't, you know, step on somebody's toes.
Well, that's why Randall Grant had the trucks back in the day, that was great.
Pizza trucks, big sign, no pizza trucks.
Because we are in restaurant, I mean, I I think that would be hard.
It could be like some of the people who would go to the farmer's market but not be selling food, you know, there were, there were people who sold, uh. Didn't one night make like stuff out of wood?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the treehouse gotta be great there, he'll pay three hundred bucks to stand there, yeah, that paid for the band.
I mean, the people can, you can taste the shots apparently, it's in the market.
I know there was one lady who brought pies and.
Yes, I got those.
She's famous, and she's famous.
I got those little meat pies.
Right. Stuff like that, you know.
I can love those things.
The kinda specialty, you know, like fresh from the farm.
They'd love that, and that doesn't mess with our businesses.
You don't need a lot of them.
Cause they can't get there, they have to go to home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, now it's competitors.
Except for Sweet Teas, but they won't be open, so it won't matter.
So what are we thinking? We're thinking Market Plaza Friday nights.
Sure. Randall brought it back, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Let's work on that.
We got a whole time, but let's put that in the uh. And then you don't have to go get ten vendors, you can get five and drink.
There's already, I mean, and the good part is, there's already an event happening there, so we already know how to run the event, we're just adding on to it. I mean, that's what you said, you need to make sure everything gets elevated, and and we, and we are selling the farmer's market because we're transforming it.
Pulling all in, that makes sense.
My even marketing brain always starts at, what's the cost? How do you pay for it, right, so is it, how many vendors do you need to pay for the cost, and the band, so the band would be offset by the vendors?
Yeah, you would, because the the band is, there's no, there's no profit on that.
Yeah.
And that would help out rec too, the rec's budget would help out rec a lot.
So now you're offsetting the cost of the band?
Exactly. Ta-da.
Right?
I did my part.
Yeah.
Leave a note.
But I think like Kevin said, I mean, we're we're gonna be looking into some type of sponsorships for events that, you know. You know, to think of the entire year as an event, I mean, I know we're just getting here, so there's a lot to like look at.
Yeah.
And it just feels like things are coming fast, like, you know, Sea Festival is in a couple of weeks, you know.
Welcome to the inside.
Time scars are coming, really, like tomorrow.
It makes you wonder if, did the people who used to run the festival here, you know, the the farmer's market, did anybody ever try to get a hold of Four H? To see if there's any of those younger farmers there that was like, where where it's like somebody's kid.
What is it called?
Four H.
Four H, what's that thing called, the young farmers, whatever it is, I mean, they're, you never know, it's like. You know, Joey's father has twenty acres, and he lets the kid fool around with one and do what you want, okay, now you got a place to go and bring your.
Your market.
Your exotic vegetables that, you know, I think they'll never sell, but go ahead, cause you're my son's daughter. Knock it out and see if you can make a business out of it, you know, cause they bring them to the Four H thing, you see them, they're selling it there. But maybe there's some of those kids might be motivated and have an ability to get the product out.
Yeah, the county may have like an agricultural.
Yeah, yeah, I'm forgetting what the.
That's a great idea.
Four H, right? There's something with the young gardeners, there's something agricultural.
What about our garden, can we pull enough for a tent?
Nah, I don't know. The the green, the magical green.
Garden, pull enough for a six-.
I don't know, I doubt it, right? That'd be funny though.
Give them a mission, you know, you gotta grow twenty cucumbers, you're fired.
I think a cool thing to think of too, is if we're talking about advertising dollars, and who we wanna bring to town, and increasing the number of people who wanna bring to town. And what are those KPIs, and what are those key performance indicators, like, how many, how many more people do you want on the Facebook page, on Instagram? How many more people do you want on a mail, on a digital mailing list, how many more people? How much, by what percentage do you wanna increase attendance at certain things? And then those can be our benchmarks for where we have the advertising, and then we can measure advertising, right? So set some goals that we go out and hit, so at the end of the year, we can be like, hey, you know, we're.
We got them.
A hundred and twelve percent to go, you know?
Did, then, um, like, should we be like harvesting like data from people, like, so we have them on text message and something like that, is that what you mean?
Yeah, like you, just have an opt-in, you know, have an opt-in, like, have an opt-in for.
Even if you sign, if you go to the information booth, maybe you can sign up like on an iPad to get, get what's it called for.
Well, in my Google Doc, you make it, you make it so you have to heck give the email, so I would grab, the dinosaur, I have to get your email, so I just have that.
But I think the other piece to that, which is probably more important for you guys, is we can track everything that we do and how many people we're hitting. But I would like to know, how is that benefiting the businesses, you know, we're spending, we're doing that, is it, is it improving?
It needs to be shared with the business.
Is it improving the business?
All these emails and all, the restaurants, not getting through, it's never been shared.
See some, somebody should come back and say, oh, this is a good year because mine, you know, I usually sell X.
That's a fact, Chris man, people don't.
No, I'm saying about this, is it really worth it, you know?
It's a really job for a. Right, so we bring in the iPhone, Main Street, say, they'll put more people on the street.
From what, up for four, tickets, we have, we sold four tickets. Oh, you mean, oh, they have all that data, we have all that data.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, Bonovich and our web team that does that, our backend team that take care of that, and they do with text messages, they do text messages, boss?
You want it all, I want it all, well, I can be able to.
But that would be a good.
That's just a one-day event for me.
Right.
Something like yourself, something like yourself.
I wonder if that's, if that gets around me like usually, like, I don't know how you.
There was more foot traffic increased because, you know.
I I just, I'm just telling you what I understand.
Whereas people.
I don't know, that's definitely something to look at, yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you what's happening on the beach, but I can't tell you what's happening on Main Street, whereas you're a constant there, and you're able to say. No, it's not the ghost town.
So I can tell you right now that the bit, that the.
I know, but if you would gave.
It hasn't, it's been great up through September, October, November, which were, October, November used to be dead. You know, October, November was like, you you didn't really, you didn't need to be open. Now, what do you attribute that to?
I think it's more, I think it's more housing, I think it's more permanent residents, you know, I think that's what it is.
I mean, it could be weather.
The weather was nice, you know, well, I'm very weather dependent, so if it's a nice day, and we have a random day right now, it was sixty degrees tomorrow. I'd sell seven hundred and fifty dollars more than I would have.
But I mean, I think that's the important figure, you know, to know that what we're doing is successful.
That's an interesting metric that you would have, Mayor, would be how many houses that are starting to sell, like last year? How many were really where you can tell by the price point, and where the people really live, if they're. I know it's like, are they, are we selling vacation towns, are we selling more to people, permanent residents? To an extent, you would kinda know, like, if voter registration goes up, then you can say, yeah, we're getting a few more residents. I mean, if you catch people that like live near me, and they're just buying a house because they got three million dollars, and they're there for two months. Uh, Bill, you know, I'm selling, I'm moving to Spring Lake, really, you would never hear a bell mark, right, you're moving to Spring Lake, okay, good luck.
Good luck, never saw ya.
But we can bang out those KPIs and then solve for them, you know, solve for them with the form, solve for them with the signup. And especially if you're looking at what county people are coming from, you can just run the demographics, demographics of that county. And see what the gross income to that county is, and figure out, oh, we got more people who have more money, who are coming to your town, history.
Thank you, well, I I have uh data from the last couple of things, I I think Facebook still has it there, cause it was there, um, but they're silly sometimes. Um, we could maybe take, not stab, uh, uh, an educated stab in the dark, I know where everyone's coming from.
Yeah.
That who bought tickets, and who um liked or shared or whatever, so we can do a shot in the dark, like a educated shot in the dark, and see what we come up with.
And they can also get spooky as a marketer, and be like, we want more people from this demographic, and change up two or three core vendors. To kind of, kind of try to shift the demographics of a crowd, if the demographics of the existing crowd aren't really getting enough return for the businesses.
Right, if they're not sitting many in town, type of thing.
Well, that's the whole idea, we can, we can say, oh my god, we got, you know, three thousand more people in Belmar, but how does that affect the business? Yeah, Belmar's attracting people, but, you know, are they, I mean, you would think logically that more people come here, they're gonna spend more money here. But it would be interesting to know, they're coming, where, where are they spending the money? Are they spending it in food, are they spending it in, um, you know, just going to the beach and, uh, liquor and alcohol?
How can we track them?
They're not spending it.
If you look at that, well, if you look at the demographic, right, and they're all twenty-something-year-old kids coming down, right, and you know, like, yeah, you know, whatever. But if you look at the demographic and say, hey, we wanna, we wanna advertise closer to West Windsor or something like that, and get those folks to come down. Or we wanna go to a heavily family populated area and advertise there, maybe two hundred of those people outspend seven hundred and fifty of the people in the existing demographic.
Right, correct.
You could theoretically get less people and be more profitable, right?
I have to look at the backend of what we, how we boost posted, cause I don't know if we did it what I would call correctly, I don't know, maybe it was. Uh, so I, so I don't know if they did, you know, eighteen-year-olds and marketed eighteen, that's a waste of money, when I, when I do, when I do a post, I'd market from twenty-seven to fifty-seven. You know, for a sweet spot, you know, and so I don't know, so we'll, we'll see what, you know, it might be terrible data, so we'll see.
But you can also see what the, who's most likely to interact with digital data, what that demographic is, then target your area. Then set that parameter, and you're gonna have a better return rate, and you're gonna have a lower cost per point, because those people are more likely to interact with it and show up. You know, cause sometimes that, it's, if you go up to sixty-five or something like that, some of the digital stuff is wasted, but people don't interact on a higher level.
Well, a lot of Facebook is, uh, what is it, like, I don't know, thirty-seven to sixty-seven, uh, trending right now?
Like forty-eight-year-old women is the sweet spot.
They love that, yeah, so I mean, so like I said, yeah, so if it's that type of thing, like, uh, Belmar cares or something like that, that's why we wanted to look into that type of side of things.
And then you could do Instagram for.
Everyone else?
So, so you could, no, I mean, you could really have different mediums for different demographics, yeah. So you could be like, hey, Instagram's gonna target this, Facebook's gonna target this.
And one thing we never really did ever, cause I don't really use Twitter for that, cause we've never used Twitter before, really, it's more of a news organization thing, but.
Cross-post to Twitter from Instagram, just for the sake of having a presence, but TikTok is really where it's at.
I was just talking about that, I know, yeah.
We have a, a, um, what do I call, like a, a group of businesses, like, that, that can be looked like, we have, you know, we have restaurants. You know, we have, um, clothing stores, you know, I mean, the, the population of businesses in Belmar. Can be lumped into various groups, and, you know, and, cause I think some of the advertising obviously may. Be targeted to one group, but really doesn't help the other group, have we, have you guys looked at that? And say, you know, like, this is the type of marketing we need to do for this group, this is the type of marketing we might need to do to this group. I mean, right now, we're lumping everybody into, into one, but, you know, if I own a clothing store, you know, we might need to. Attract people differently than people who are gonna go to an Italian restaurant, you know, so. I mean, I, that's a thought, that, you know, as you're looking at these things, look at the groups of people, you know, the businesses that we have, things that they have in common, you know.
You're looking at Cutest Buttons, then you'd be looking at Dabidale and, uh, Cander Square and Hazel.
We have in town, I mean, I'm just thinking.
You know what we could do, that I can think of is.
Or how you could characterize them.
I'm sorry, man, uh, oh, we, we could do a date, so, so whatever the date of anything is, right? I could put out a text to the business, how'd you do that day? And be like, it was terrible, it was awesome, it was great, I made, you know, and just get that pulse right there.
Survey, survey.
Survey.
Segment the people and just say, okay, food guys did well, and then, you know, some of them say, well, food guys always do well, everybody's gotta eat. Everybody's gotta go to the chachka store and buy more stuff.
Well, the hairdresser, the hairdresser in town already called, asking what the Sea Festival was, cause they wanna close.
Yeah, though that.
Because it, because it's in town, because it's at the plaza.
But it's not, well.
But it's not, well.
Well, no.
Now we're good.
Well, yeah.
So we'll call them back. Here are good news.
Stay open.
solves for that.
I mean, but imagine.
Give us your brochures to bring down.
But imagine having to close your business for that.
Yeah, oh, believe me, I know.
Point. I mean, that, that's a neat.
I do know.
Here's a solve for the segments though, right? Cause you just look, if we look at doing marketing all year round and not just for the events, right? You look at that fine dining segment, who's that gonna be? Demographically, where do they live? What platform do they use the most? You can group all our fine dining stuff and advertise it there and see what kind of return you get on that. If there's casual dining, you can do one for that. If there's uh specialty stores, you can do one for that. Right? So you can segment them all out and try those different campaigns.
And and you could also see if there's maybe some areas of where businesses were totally left out.
Yeah.
Like possibly like yourself, like, so who's targeting cigar? Well, who fits in with your demographic? You know, liquor store probably.
Yeah.
But, you know, but hardly, y- yours is a, an exception, but I think like some stores we can see where maybe nothing's ever been done for that, their kind of branding because they're not food.
Yeah.
They're not hairsty.
And the right of the.
Like we have a candle shop.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's a perfect example. That's a perfect example. The candle shop.
Right, yeah, so you know, then you do that specialty retail, let's see who's, who's in that group.
Then have your professional services in town.
And I think those are. Yeah, those kinda like niche retailers are, really can tell you what's going on in town because, well, not maybe me, but most people get their haircut on a consistent basis, right? You go to a beauty salon, you've got an appointment, or what, you have them all the time, so. But, you know, and you're eating, so that's. But some of the smaller things like, so the record guy, how's it going? Uh, you know, I think those are the kinda people we should try to, and even try to also as a committee, invite them into the commission, just say, so how can we help you? Like, instead of, listen.
I don't know, yeah.
You help me move four bales at the back with the hand carts.
But I think when, when we're talking about marketing, right, you have to cast a wider net because one of the problems, and we were kicking around, maybe doing a chamber of commerce last year. But one of the problems is, some, some businesses are wildly specific and you're never gonna do something that's absolutely dramatic that, right? You're gonna, you're gonna.
Ever.
You could do specialty and try, like, he lets highlight a specialty business a week, or let's highlight, you know, a specialty business night or a week or a specialty. You know, whatever, like you can do, run a different ad on that. But you're never gonna be like, hey, candles and cigar night.
That would also be an interesting thing to offer at the farmer's market, to say there's three or four spots for Belmar businesses that are down there. And take it or not on a rotating basis. Or the record guy wants to go and put out like five, oh, by the way, you really like records? My store's two blocks over there.
Well, he can have somebody come and DJ.
Yeah.
Sing vinyl.
Right.
And then drive people over. So it, it, it's, and he does a lot of those events. So he does have people DJ, he does do Record Day, he does do special releases.
But that might be something that helps the farmer's market, ju- just to make it a better experience, because the more people experience something that's unique. Or they're, have to go there to, to, to check it out.
He could be the featured specialty retailer at the, at the market one day, right?
And that's what they want, cause now, I'm getting older, obviously younger, thank you, um, that's, I'm the demographic. The demographic that now finally has money, now goes out, wants to spend the money, wants to check out these cool little candle things and go through town and walk and see things with their kids. And I think we have that, but I don't think people know, I don't think businesses in town know how to utilize that properly. So maybe there needs to be like an entry, hey, you're a business, we talked about this, it never got done. When you come in, business in town, there's a whole entire packet. This is exactly what you gotta do to be successful in Belmar.
Probably, there's some people who are a little jaded and think that if I, you know, I have to promote my business, I have to do it myself.
Well, there's at least ten businesses in town, I've asked them, hey, you want social media? And they literally yelled at me and said, no. And, and we don't have Facebook. I'm like, alright, man. So I don't know what to do.
Those are hobbies.
I mean, I don't know what.
No, a lot of, a lot of those are the old.
The other thing that these businesses could do too is, is like cross-morfetting, you know, like, for example, and I'm just using you as an example, it probably wouldn't work out, but you know, you could promote the candle guy, you know, like, you know, we have. If the other wife not like the smoke of, uh, you know, of cigars, well, you know, buy a couple candles.
I've admitted I can't in my store, I had sweet in my store, we had a ladies' night.
So I mean, that's another way to, to promote, you know, they can promote other stores, you know, like the record.
Candle guy did it right.
Yeah, that was really great.
I would be interested in helping with that, cause I think we should have outreach to the rest of the businesses and saying,
Yeah.
Hey, we are on the commission, we are looking for your input and we are, we wanna bring you into the process.
Yeah, we're allowed, we're allowed to go talk to people. Actually, to go back to the, to the ordinance, there is a mandate that the commission is supposed to have an advisory group. You just to, so you could create that and say, you know what? We, we're asking people not to be on the commission, just to come and.
That would be nice.
Basically, that's what we think. Just have a sit here and do that because you might wanna look into actually doing that.
Well, I wanted to do a, um, like a, we did it once, I think, four years ago, where we did the, uh, I think, I forget what mayor was under, it might have been Matt. Um, the business summit, uh, remember we did that? It kinda worked, kinda didn't, and it was a whole bunch of businesses came to town, I know you guys were there. But I wanna do something where like, I don't know, every other Thursday, for an hour, I can teach you about social media marketing, one of you guys can speak, we can let them know what's going on. And kinda be like a liaison to everybody and let them know, every other Thursday, the first Thursday of the month, you can learn how to run your business in town and know what's going on.
It's a good idea for the shoulder seasons.
Right.
And you know, like, I think when you get busy.
When I had my days in town.
Well, that's what I mean now.
Now's the time.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it should be the responsibility of the tourism commission to go specific businesses. It should be specific groups or types of businesses and outreach to specific demographic. And then anything past that gets into like a business advisor, right, area or a chamber of commerce type area.
And and the reach that you have on digital is really pretty good because every, for every Chris, Chris knows four or five people. Or in Chris's case, of, of other businesses that are near him, that might not be as dialed into digital, just say, you know, they're really trying to get this thing back together. Get rid of your jaded opinion, come to, come to a meeting and see.
See what we're doing.
Yeah, right.
We're all here because we care.
You know, you could actually put on a, a demo for those businesses and say, you know, here's what you can get if you, if you participate.
We have five businesses.
People here and look, and use the meeting as a, you know, as a learning opportunity.
You can bring someone in too.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, uh.
Listen, five or ten people can't make all the decisions for the hundred men, three that are here, right? I mean, it's, it's only the truth.
I said, under the cloak of night, and you don't want government involved in it, cause you know, every time government steps into something, it, it just is another further complication. You know, so.
We'll get to it next time. On the next agenda, never forget that. So speaking of the next agenda, so we're back here in what, three weeks, I guess?
I think the.
Two weeks.
Two.
Is it every two weeks?
No, it's monthly, but this was.
No, I know, I know, this was an extra special one. I like that.
So John, can somebody like Nick get a list of, so we can try and like segment some stuff out and just say, here's, in other words, we can almost be informally just by email saying, so where do you put the candle guy? Okay, he's in this niche, this guy's in this, and say, here's our five areas, right? So we can kinda do some of this stuff.
We gotta have a printout of a hundred, whatever we have, businesses, right?
Yeah.
John, I'll give you the list of the businesses?
Yeah, we have it there.
We have it, right.
I'll, I'll give you the list of the businesses and I'll teach you Nixel and then you can make a whole thing of all that. And then, and you'll have, you can segment it.
I mean, I would, I would encourage people to come if they wanna be on an advisory council. Just say, come to the meeting if you're interested in being on.
It would be.
And then you see, you know, how many people come.
And I think you, you definitely could as, as we're in this early season, right, right, where you, people like yourself have time.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you have time now. May, they don't have time.
But you still gotta create time. I, I, I don't have time is bullshit.
Unless we gotta tell.
Create the time. You have to create the time.
Yeah, except, except if you're in a town that has business for what? You, you call, do you call it four months? I really call it three. I say you have three months to make a year's worth of money. I don't think you have time. Once you really, you know, like I used to, my friends would say they went open a business in town, it's like, well, really, really bust yourself for a hundred days, no days off? Say, cause you gotta make three hundred and sixty-five days worth of money, cause they're only here for a hundred. And, and then the rest are just like, okay, wow, customer came in.
Yeah, no, right, yeah.
I definitely see my season expand in the fall winter, you know? A little bit.
Yeah.
Dead right now.
Love to see some people come in and tell us what they think.
And that's another, like, how do you, how do you extend the season? You know, or make an event.
Events extend the season.
Or make an event in the winter. I mean, I remember.
Adventures things gonna be great.
Doing, exactly. I mean, I remember doing the, um, the, the Christmas or holiday walk. I don't know how beneficial that was to you guys, but as a president.
Um, I should experience that organized by.
That would be a treat at a private business. That was great.
I loved it. That's where I met you.
We can organize that.
When we get that piano in the plaza, we're gonna have a monthly, uh, monthly, uh, thing in the snow. Think about that. That's just gonna be sick.
Plus you gotta realize, if you drive around, as I said, if you go out to one thirty-eight, they built all those, I don't know what they are.
Yeah, all the, yeah.
You go, uh, where else do I see them?
Thirty-three.
There's massive development going on outside of Belmar, but within.
Months, three months.
Yeah, so those are the people, you know, even though our population might not be increasing, people who live there.
No, you're right.
We should have flyers right in that place.
Way out. I mean, I, I drive and I'm like, oh my God, there's another.
You guys, you guys did there.
You know, so I, I think that's the, if you see progress, I think a lot of that's gonna be because of that.
Yeah.
Those people who, you know, they're working from home, they're stuck in the house all day, or they're commuting, and then they're like, you know what? Come drive to the beach.
And you know what else you're right about that is that, that's when you get a chance to get people and set what their habits are gonna be. Cause once you set your habits, you know, it's kinda like, yeah, I got a place, I got that. But if you're able to say, you know, as that place you're talking about on one thirty-eight gets built up and say, come check out our downtown. You know, we have this, here's a list of businesses, oh, by the way, and welcome, and here's some whatever level of coupons that are given out. In a welcome thing, as, as we could get that all that info from, so, from, uh, digital stuff, you know? Who closed on houses in that development, boom, 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 you know they're getting it from everybody else besides being asked to change their insurance company, everything else they sent you.
I mean, the tourism, like swag back, I'm out last year at the beach, I mean, it really was just the, it's really just what the borough produces, which is the dining guide. And.
Well, again, it's opportunity to learn sixty twenty businesses.
It could be, you know, it could be full to the brand.
Right, well, you could offset the cost of creating the bags by having businesses sponsor.
Sponsor, yeah. I mean, you know, you want your thing, and it could be, it could be a cheap sponsorship too, you know?
That's gonna have the devil.
Nobody needs a bag so somebody covers the cost.
But, yeah, I mean, it was, it was pretty, it was pretty empty. And why not have a coach there from restaurant if that's what you want?
People, uh, stay in local, they're not getting on planes flying to Miami because of COVID.
Right. Well, and more people work from home now too, which was during COVID, I had an increase in business.
And apparently there's grants for mass transit as well that we can get, like if you're a municipality or something like that, uh, you can get free advertising.
You can advertise for free on the.
And, yeah.
In the station.
Yeah.
So I can advertise for my business for free or for a really reduced rate in the station.
Right.
So in the town that your business is in, you can advertise on that transit advertising that's in there.
So we should know other advertisers.
Right?
The other thing.
That's something we can encourage.
That should be a learning tool.
That can't be, that can't be us.
No, we, but we could go to people, be like, print out the form and, or send around the form and say, here's an opportunity to advertise in the Belmar train station.
I mean, back in the day, when you moved into an, an area, they had something called the welcome wagon.
Yeah.
And somebody would come around and you'd get, and you'd get that package with all the different, I mean, now the postal office does something like that. If you change your address, you get a mailing from the middle and say, you know, Wayfair fifteen percent off for your first, you know, so. I mean, another thought for the businesses is, you know, like when you see a big development going up, even if it's not in Belmar, it might be worth it to get a, make their own like value pack and say, you know, come and visit Belmar and, and have. These are the things, you know, and send it to, you know, everyone in that.
I advertise the Val pack every month, and it works. It works great for me. I think, uh, we, you know, maybe they can do some kinda deal too for us.
Have you seen the, get, the guy that walks around and does the door hangers for the summer?
Yeah, it's like three times, sometimes it's in and out.
I'm not saying we use that guy, but I'm saying, but I'm saying that's a good, that's a very Belmar specific packet that he puts together.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's.
Well, I think we can make it in-house a lot too, you know, and do a combo deal, like you said, it could be one page sheet that costs a thousand dollars. We charge a thousand to do it with different sponsorships and whatever's going on, and he just hand deliver it. I just drop it off wherever we're going. You, you, you own the foghorn, you own the foghorn, so you go, you can do it.